So we call this meeting to order. Alexander County's Board of Education, scheduled today, Tuesday, May 14th. It's a regular monthly meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education. As we go forward with our first item on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. I have successfully. Here we go. So we have Hemion Dykes, a seventh grader from East Alexander Middle School, the daughter of Richard and Tasha Dykes. We have Candace Kelso, daughter of Crystal Kelso from East Alexander, and Zoe Houston, seventh grader, West Alexander Middle School, daughter Scott and Heather Houston. All stand.
Attention, salute, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great job.
Good job.
Well done. Good job. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and a second for approval of the board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved unanimously by the board. So next on the agenda, we have honors and recognitions. Dr. Hefner, you have the floor.
Board Member Bowman, will you help me with these presentations? This is always my favorite part of the meeting, and tonight, we're going to be recognizing students from our CTE program. Skills USA students traveled to Greensboro for state competition on April 23rd through the 25th. The motto of Skills USA is preparing for leadership in the world of work, and this organization gives students opportunities to practice, excuse me, technical and professional skills learned in their CTE classes. Alexander Central High School had students competing in the areas of carpentry, drafting, electrical, and firefighting. We are so proud of these students and their advisors, if we have any. I see at least one here tonight. Please stand Mr. Josh Bowles, Mr. Roy Hadley, and Mr. Justin Deal. Let's give them a round of applause. They were there with these students in the state competition, and certainly, they spent lots of time with them, preparing them for that competition. Also, thank you to Mr. Jordan Wagner and Mr. Raimi Robinson from CBCC, who served as advisors for our CCP students. We are very pleased to announce that we had state winners in the categories of carpentry and electrical construction wiring. In the carpentry competition, that's what I'll start with, Harley Grogan placed fifth in the state. Harley is currently a junior at ACHS. Please come forward, Harley.
Good job.
Nathan Morelos received third place in the carpentry competition. He is a senior at ACHS. And Bentley Gilbert, wow, wow, wow. He was a first-place winner in the state for carpentry. Bentley is a senior who has been competing in Skills USA events for a couple of years. Bentley is a standout CTE student who has excelled in trades classes at AC. With this first-place finish, he qualifies to represent Alexander County and North Carolina at Skills USA Nationals that will be held in Atlanta later in June. Bentley, we are so proud of you, and we know that you're going to do a super job representing your school and this county. Another round of applause. And then we also, do you want to get those first, Dr. Dalrevis? Because we have another category. That's good.
That was great.
And guys, I realize that your carpentry, if, when the paper, when she gets her photo, I'd like for you to slide over. We're going to do the electrical recognition, but then I would like all four of you also together, okay? So would you like to get their picture, or are you gonna wait? Okay, okay, guys, if you'll just slide over to the side, but don't take a seat yet. Next, we are going to recognize one student who takes electrical with CBCC, the college and career promise classes at the ACHS campus, and he also medaled in the state competition. Lucas Day placed fifth in electrical construction wiring. Lucas is currently a junior at ACHS, and he, we hope he will continue pursuing electrical and compete again next year. Congratulations, Lucas.
Great job.
So let's get a picture of him, Dr. Dalrevis, by himself, and then all four of them together, since it's a different category. All right, now squeeze in, and I'd like a photo of all of you together.
No, you, you, you.
Come on, Raimi. Get up there.
Come on, Raimi, the crowd wants you.
Come on, Raimi.
Come on, Raimi.
Wait, wait, just a minute. Wait a minute.
And I think that the PD Director, and Dr. Hefner, and Scott Bowman as well, and I'm gonna start with Chris as well.
Great job, guys. Well done. Great job.
Can I add one more piece in there? He probably don't want this mentioned, but huge shout out to Josh Bowles. Many of y'all don't know this, but he stepped up and helped co-chair that contest to keep things going, and he, he put a lot of work into that. And now, he didn't judge, he had judges outside of the scope of the contest, but, you know, advisors in that organization had to step up sometimes, and he really stepped up this year to help out a huge part, so, thank you, Josh.
And Raimi, I wanna, these, I know at least two, y'all went last year, I didn't think so, but these fellows, they were, they were, they were very, they were very.
Yeah. Good job.
Very well done. So next on the agenda, we have public comment. I'll read the procedures for public comment before we proceed. One question, Chris, we have three folks that have signed up. I don't have the order in which they signed up.
I think I've successfully shuffled the order, so I apologize. Okay, thank you.
So while Chris is doing that, I'll read.
They're in order.
Thank you. The procedure, each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them, and time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Only one spokesperson will be allowed to speak for a group of individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Speakers will be acknowledged by the chairman, in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, or personal attacks on a board member or school employee will be cause for ending of that particular speaker's time, as determined by the board chairperson. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the board. The public comment of the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole, and not one individual member of the board. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers will refrain from discussions of any of the following items: items which are closed session matters, including but not limited to attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisition or liquidation, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with General Statute 115C-321 and the Open Meetings Law, which protects students and employee records. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. So with that being said, we will continue with Ms. Cindy Sellers, who wishes to speak about school funding. Thank you, Mrs. Sellers.
I am Cindy Sellers, and I'm the president of our local resident school personnel, but I'm speaking tonight in honor and memory of my great-grandmother, who got her teaching certificate here in the year 1900. I have it at home, I should have brought it. Watching a presentation at Rotary by Mr. Charles Draper from Bethlehem School a couple weeks ago reinforced why I would never homeschool my grandchildren or send them to private schools. What our local schools experience academically, socially, athletically, musically, artistically, and culturally, I could never replicate at my house, or in my home. Our local educators are highly specialized experts in their fields. Our schools offer so much more for every student, every one, every one of them, and even more if the money is there. So why are the leaders here facing some terrible decisions? Go to this website, publicschoolsfirstnc.org, and it states that North Carolina spends $5,000 less than the national average on each student. So why is there a shortage of money in this county? In this state? You need to look down I-40 to Raleigh and ask the majority there. Republicans have a supermajority, which means the governor cannot veto anything they do. Some of us have been trying to warn people for 13 years, since 2011, that using public tax money for private school vouchers was not going to end well, and here we are. 25,000 of us marched in Raleigh a few years ago, ran qualified pro-public education candidates for office, voted for people who would be great for public schools, but in this county, people were elected who have brought this upon us. The current majority have a goal of privatizing schools, because I'm guessing they love the campaign donations from the corporations and owners of those private schools, which helps keep them in power, and power corrupts otherwise good people. Power is their goal, not service. Ask them why they do this, I don't know, really. Recently, a $50,000 donation to Sunny Point School was made for a playground, and that's great, but what about all the other schools, students, staff, who would benefit from funding all of our public schools? That's a great way to get votes, but we must look at the big picture. Millions of dollars are up for grabs in Raleigh right now. Almost $500 million is what they're talking about down there, and they want to give it to the vouchers, because we have so many people asking for vouchers, and guess what? They're vouchers for wealthy people who don't need this money to send their schools, their students to private school. Alexander County needs this money, and we would have $13 million if the Leandro suit that was filed in the government would be given to Alexander County, $13 million. While I was on the school board, I had the privilege of watching Dr. Hefner and the staff create a 21st century school system, with lots of women leaders, which makes sense, since most people employed in the system are women. So here's to a great future for Alexander County schools, and I'm hoping that women and children are going to be valued, and that the state and the people in this county are going to vote for leaders, who are going to do great for our kids. Our kids deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mary Beth White, who's going to speak about the reduction in force procedure.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, and members of the school board, and community folks here tonight. I wanted to come back again tonight to speak once more on the reduction in force plan and procedure that has been set forth. As you know, last time I was here, I spoke in proud support of my colleague, Madam Nancy Griner, who is our French and Teacher Cadet teacher. I just want to touch back on that little moment, to let you know kind of how things are happening at the high school, we're in that time of registration. Looking towards our numbers, right? Everything is per pupil spending, and we are looking at enrollment next year for how many students we have, and how many teachers we need to serve those students. And so, looking at our numbers in our department, my department, Word Language, it looks to me like my colleagues and I have full classes. If you look across the spectrum of French 1 through 4, if you look across the spectrum of Teacher Cadet 1 and 2, we have enough classes that it looks to me like Nancy needs to be teaching all eight classes of the year and taking no planning. Now, normally, I would not support that, as her department chair for her mental health, but she's got a lot on her plate, and I just wanted to speak to the RIF process of which teachers we're addressing with this tonight, before you go into closed session, and the reasoning behind it. Are we looking at folks on the RIF list based on things that are completely out of their control, like student registration for classes? Are we looking at other factors? I just also want to point out, are we going to have enough teachers at our level to fulfill all the graduation requirements? We have an excellent CTE program. Crystal Hope and her colleagues have done an amazing job serving our kids with those 21st century needs, the job skills that they need to go out into the workforce, and I'm sure Raimi Robinson would tell you, these young men that you saw tonight are going to be very adequately prepared to do some jobs and serve our community. But I would like to see our kids served in a variety of areas. So towards that RIF process, I just kind of am wondering, why have we not had any appeals? Why has that not been open to folks? I would also just like to put in a plug on the NCAE side of things. As the NCAE representative in my building, I just want to point out, North Carolina doesn't love a union, and that can be controversial politically. Asheville City Schools and Durham County Association of Educators have reached a majority of their staff members being association members. So what happens when we start unionizing, when we start asking for a collective bargaining? And what happens when teachers in this community, homegrown teachers in this community who was raised here, when those folks start leaving to teach elsewhere, where they can ask for more, and they can ask for better? And I think here, we support our kids, and we support the kids that we raise here to become teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Diane Little, the concerns about the Chair's article last week in the paper.
Good evening, and thank you for the privilege of addressing this forward. Let me tell you that I have over 50 years invested, almost, in public education in North Carolina, 23 here at Alexander Central, and six as an assistant principal and principal at Newton Conover High School, and then 19 as a college administrator part-time. So my heart has always been in public education, and by the way, I taught several of you, Raimi, Josh, and Anthony, and I expect the most exemplary leadership to come from the three of you in the future. And I still have access to your permanent folder, so don't mess around. My focus is simply to inform you of some, I think, misperceptions that have come about because of the article. I commend you for the article and for trying to explain the situation and putting some interesting facts out there, but I am concerned that there were some impressions left that are negative instead of positive. It seems that in some situations, the board was almost absolved of any responsibility for the possible RIFs and for the plan of developing what would happen to address the shortfall. A statement was made at the beginning of the article, "Conversations, assumptions, and innuendos are most dangerous when they're taken by one side," and I agree with that, but I think that's exactly what the article did unintentionally, I'm sure. I'm afraid that the article has laid the groundwork for those kinds of assumptions and innuendos on the part of some people, and I'll tell you why. There were a lot of comments on Facebook, and I kept reading them from various people that said, "Mismanagement of funds, mismanagement of funds." And I asked people, "Do you have proof of that?" Because if there were proof, I wanted to know. And they said no, and one lady finally said, "Well, no, but based on what I'm hearing, I must assume there was mismanagement of funds." So you see, we're creating those assumptions when we open that kind of a door, and again, I don't think it was intentional, but that's just out there, ladies and gentlemen, and you need to know that. The budgetary issues, the root cause, yes, we've lost some students to private schools and to home schools. Our population is declining, people are moving out, and that's going to get worse. We're going to lose another 2% in the next year.
Right.
And I think the school system had to rely on attrition and the government programs under COVID and ESAR. What other choices did they have? All public school systems are in the same situation. I think you know that, I'm not sure the public knows that, but everybody is in this situation, primarily because since 2010, the powers that be at the state level have made an effort to really undermine the public schools. The one entity you are bound by law to defend, they've taken away, you know, master's pay longevity due process, consistently just sent funding elsewhere to churches and privates, and folks, it's getting worse. Am I through already?
Please continue.
Yeah, blame it.
Great topic.
Can I continue?
Absolutely.
You are so good. So I think, you know, Dr. Hefner was asked to create this plan, but, and she and her leadership team did so, and she's the one who should do that. They should do that with the personnel, they know the personnel. You guys don't, I'm sure you know some of them, but it seems like, again, in that article, all the blame, no word was ever used, but I think it was placed on her shoulders and the shoulders of her team. I've known a lot of members of the Board of Education for many years, as I mentioned, these three older people sitting here in front of me, that I taught years ago. Not one of them that I've ever known would mismanage funds, and you will not mismanage funds, will you, Raimi and Josh and Anthony? Absolutely not. I think it's an inaccurate and unfair assumption, and so I just encourage you to do something to, you know, to clarify that. One last point, I did agree with this statement, these are tough times, and they require very difficult decisions, and God bless you for being the people who will make them. The reality of the situation that requires us, the article said, to work together as one team. Folks, you're the team that will stand up for this school system, and you're the team that will recognize the leadership that is getting ready to depart from this school system, and I encourage you to give the recognition that is due to Jennifer Hefner, and Betsy Curry, and all the other folks who have struggled all these years to manage this. This didn't happen overnight, there were no magical solutions, but this is your charge to lead and to lead well, and I pray that you will do so, and I have all the confidence in the world that you will, but Raimi and Josh and Anthony, remember, I'll be watching.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all three speakers, and the heartfelt and very informative feedback that you all provided. Thank you very much for taking the time to speak with us. As we go on to the next portion of the agenda, we have the consent agenda. What is the motion of the feelings on the board on the consent agenda?
Need to approve. Second.
So we have a first and second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? By unanimous decision, the consent agenda is approved. So next, we have reports. East Alexander Middle School, Mr. Huffman will be speaking about the wonderful things taking place there.
All right. Good evening. Always like to check whenever I get up about my voice level.
You're good.
Sometimes I've got school voice that comes out real loud, I want to make sure I'm not blowing out anybody's eardrums this evening. Good evening, Dr. Hefner, Chairman Argüés, members of the board. Thank you so very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this evening and share. We have some exciting things going on at East Middle, and some of those things include our focus this year, which has been belief. Belief in each other as educators, belief in being teammates with one another, belief in our students, and that they can achieve great things. Our academic focus this year has revolved around collaborative planning to maximize the impactfulness of our lessons and presentation. Our instructional coach, Ms. Tease, has led the way in these professional learning communities, and has used data from iReady as well as our check-in testing to help drive our instruction We have also used this information through collaboration to assist with multi-tiered systems of support. Essentially, we're tailor-making interventions for students for a customized educational plan. On that note of MTSS, we have also established data decision rules, which help make determinations for MTSS need. Behaviorally, we continue to use our SOAR matrix, as well as social and emotional lessons, to help students better understand acceptable social behaviors, as well as expected classroom behaviors. Our PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention Support, has been amplified with an online store that we created this year, where students who receive positive points can turn those in to receive different items. So we've seen a very high rate of success in implementing that online store for students to be able to use. Coming back to academics, you can see that our iReady math scores have increased significantly over this school year. Previously, we had a majority of our scores fall well into the lower-left quadrant, as you can see there, and going back historically a lot here, now we've raised ourselves up into high-performance, high proficiency. From the beginning of the year, we have increased in grade-level proficiency in math from 27% at the beginning of the year to 46% as of two weeks ago. Last year, our end-of-year proficiency was at 39%. Like I said, at this point this year, we're at 46, so we're showing great growth there, and we're also showing growth in reading as well. As you can see, we can attribute growth to our staff attendance, which has been phenomenal this year. Their lesson planning in our PLCs has been impactful, their attendance has been great, and with that being said, you can see in February last year, 83, this year, 21. So that's 9,760 more instructional hours led by our teachers compared to last year. They're making a huge impact in being there for those students day in and day out. Our Teacher Working Condition Survey results, in 2020, 48% thought East was a good place to work and learn. 2022, 56%. This year, that result is 87%, so we're building a lot of positivity there within our school. We have increased our social media footprint, as we have made it a point to promote and highlight our school over this past year. We have also used Class Dojo as a way to keep parents informed. We've also included positive parent phone calls to brag on our students who are continuing to do the right thing. Got some neat pictures here, some of the stuff our students have been able to participate in. I'm going to go down an amazing list that I know a lot of middle schools around the state will be jealous of. Real Money Real World, learning that financial literacy at a young age, STEM Day at Appalachian State, visit to the Science Center. Our EC students were able to go to a Science Center. A CTE showcase. year. They're making a huge impact in being there for those students day in and day out. Our Teacher Working Condition Survey results. In 2020, 48% thought East was a good place to work and learn. 2022, 56%. This year, that result is 87%. So we're building a lot of positivity there within our school. We have increased our social media footprint as we have made it a point to promote and highlight our school over this past year. We've also used Class Dojo as a way to keep parents informed. We've also included positive parent phone calls to brag on our students who are continuing to do the right thing. Got some neat pictures here of some of the stuff our students have been able to participate in. I'm going to go down an amazing list that I know a lot of middle schools around the state will be jealous of. Real Money, Real World, learning that financial literacy at a young age, STEM Day at Appalachian State, visits to the Science Center. Our EC students were able to go to a Science Center, a CTE showcase, a career fair, looking and we're working with West now at a future overnight trip to DC, visits to the high school, industry tours, new CTE classes being offered that align better with the high school curriculum. We're actually expanding. I've sat down with our teachers, kind of gave them a challenge. They've come up with some new course offerings, which are going to continue to push us forward into the future. Our Battle of the Books team was, had a victory here in the county this past year. The spelling bee winner from our school, so, you know, had a lot of awesome positive things that continue to happen there at East. We recognize our Students of the Month as well as our Bus Riders of the Month, awesome chorus concerts, athletics had a successful year, and our band concerts as well, which we've got one at 7:00. I'm going to head down the hill in a little bit and make sure they know that I'm going to support. Thanks, of course, to our great community partners and sponsors and our Falcon Family Connect group who do so much for us throughout the year. Our Teacher Appreciation Week was absolutely amazing, the way the community poured in to appreciate those teachers and the hard work they do day in and day out. I am very blessed to be at East Alexander Middle School, and thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
I just got a couple of comments. I drop my daughter off every morning, and I just appreciate you being out there welcoming everybody. You know, it's not elementary school anymore, but you're out there and you're welcoming them, and your team is out there.
Yes, sir.
And it's been a different atmosphere this year there. And I've been able to eat there and be with your SRO and see him in action, do many things, your staff. It seems like a more, better atmosphere this year. And I just want to say thank you for all you've done for my child.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that. It means a lot. Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations on your marked improvement, and it's obvious that focus is there and leadership is there and execution is there.
Got a great team.
I was just going to say, the key word is team. Your team is doing a great job.
Yes, sir.
Let's continue that. That over 100%, that close to 100% improvement curve speaks volumes.
Thank you, sir.
Speaks volumes. So a nice job.
Thank you.
To everyone in the East team.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Great job.
I appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
So next, as we go on to the next is West Alexander Middle School. Mrs. Mayo, principal, will be presenting.
Good evening, Dr. Hefner and members of the board. First off, I would just like to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you tonight, but more importantly, to lead West Alexander Middle School. So when I was named principal, the previous two principals told me, "You're going to a little slice of heaven." And so I've said numerous times that when they first said that, I was like, "Ah, well, you know, well, people say that." But having been there a year, it truly is a little slice of heaven. I also would like to say that I, you know, don't know that I should be up here. I feel that my team should be up here with me presenting the information and the successes of this year. As everyone knows, I was out on maternity leave for a good chunk of the fall, and so I'm very thankful to Mr. Siren, Mr. Tomlin, and Ms. Houston, who is here with us tonight. And so a big part of my presentation is highlighting the people who are at West Alexander because it's truly what makes it such a special place. And so you'll hear me refer to Ms. Houston and the leadership team as we go through some of the successes. So I needed to take this opportunity to publicly thank them and make sure everyone knows that their work this year helped drive us to the success that we have experienced. This first slide, so "On Purpose With Purpose." This was my slogan, theme, whatever you want to call it. This is what I charged my staff with at the beginning of the year. This graphic has been in all of my newsletters, and the meaning behind this is just that whatever we do, we need to be intentional about how we do it. And so I charged my staff to live out this motto professionally as well as personally, but we only get our students for a very few moments of the day. And so every one of those moments, we need to be intentional about the time that we have with them. And then for my staff, definitely need to be intentional about what you're doing outside of school so that you're there and you're ready the next day at 7:40. So our instructional focus this year that aligns to our school improvement goal of increasing proficiency on math and reading EOGs, our two main focuses this year was, one, continuing with high expectations for learning. So when I stepped into the role as principal, Dr. Curry and Ms. Nash had actually already sat down and created a schedule that allowed for more class time, and so more core class time, which allowed our teachers more opportunity to differentiate in their classes. The other thing is maintaining a strong PLC culture. And so I attribute a lot of that work to Ms. Houston. So she's really worked with staff this year and teachers on being hands-on with data, analyzing that data to decide, "What are we going to do during our intervention time with students?" So that's the second big focus that's up there. And this, our teachers, we had a flex team that was, you can go back to that, sorry. We had a, I pulled together a flex team to really redesign what happens during our intervention time. And that flex team decided we were going to call it Paul's Time, right? So to go along with our Bulldog mascot. But what this time did is it really mimics a lot of what they're doing at the high school. Students don't have as much choice as what high schoolers have in where they go or what they're doing during this time. But it allowed for teachers, I believe in the power of a teacher. And so previously, students had been working in iReady, the instructional component, for a lot of this intervention time, but this year, our teachers were the ones implementing interventions. And so, again, Ms. Houston works with them to dive into data. What do students need? So they're able to provide really targeted interventions based on iReady data, check-in data, and classroom assessment data. The flexibility piece of this time allows teachers to move kids in and out. So our students aren't sitting in a math intervention for nine weeks necessarily. They might be in there for two weeks while a teacher really works with them on a specific skill, and then they get to go to an enrichment activity, which I'll talk about in just a second. And so I think the flexibility of it was a huge, it was hard for teachers to wrap their brains around it first, but now, as we talk to the majority of our teachers, they're really loving it. What they've seen, and one of the biggest wins for me, are some student successes in terms of their confidence level. So students who have really struggled in math class now have had opportunities to work in small groups or even one-on-one with their teachers outside of class time, and they are seeing success in math that they've never seen before. And so they go into class more confident, reading, teachers are building background knowledge during this time. So when they go into class, they're raising their hands and they're answering questions where they've not been able to do that before. So this time in our day, it is highly protected time. We don't do a whole lot of extra things. Clubs don't happen during this time. Our SEL lessons don't happen during this time. And that was really in an effort to give teachers the opportunity to learn how to manage and how to move kids in and out and really how to be hands-on with the data to determine what students need. Now you can flip. So continuing with our instructional goal, this is our iReady diagnostic results from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So right now, overall, our school in math, 61% of students are either on or above grade level. Our grade level breakdown for this, so sixth grade grew 33 percentage points in the number of students on or above grade level from beginning of the year to end of year. Our seventh grade, they grew 20 percentage points in the number of students on or above grade level. And our eighth grade grew 11 percentage points in number of students on or above grade level. You can flip. Reading, overall, 50% of our students are at or above grade level. Again, sixth grade, they grew 15 percentage points in number of students on or above. Seventh grew nine, and eighth grew four. So these numbers, particularly in math, particularly in sixth grade, I really am attributing to the hard work that our teachers are doing during that intervention time as well as that additional class, core class time where teachers are able to differentiate in their classroom. So, next slide. This is probably, so this is a picture of our students who are participating in a lot of the enrichment activities that we do during our intervention time. So of course, we have students that are on or above grade level, and so they don't need to be working one-on-one with a teacher. So what do you do with them? I want to protect the number of kids that are in those classrooms working with students. So Ms. Houston and I sat down before school started, and we started talking, "Well, what does this look like?" And again, something that she ran with, our exploratory teachers, our ISS coordinator, Ms. Lewis, our media coordinator, anybody that's available from 9:00 to 9:30, really helps out with these students to provide enrichment activities. So some of the things, and these are just some things that have happened recently, that happened during this time. We have a student news network that Ms. Lewis, so they weekly produce a news broadcast that we show on Fridays. Our Battle of the Books team worked during this time to prepare for Battle of the Books. We have one of our CTE teachers, he did some logic puzzles, he did an Alexander County research project with students, he did a financial literacy project with students. Another CTE teacher currently this week is working on a time warp game, which is a history game for students. And then, of course, we have jazz band, advanced course, advanced art, and weight training, which were all things that were established at WHAMs that happened during that time. So again, the exploratory teachers have been a tremendous help with us being able to provide some true academic enrichment opportunities for our students. Our ISS coordinator currently is working with students on a CSI activity involving the assassination of Abraham Lincoln. So the kids really are loving all of these extra opportunities and things that they're getting to do. So I'm super proud of this time in our day and what we've done and what our teachers have accomplished because when I tell you early in the year, and I threw this idea out at them, they were very overwhelmed and very much like, "I don't know how this is going to work." But it is, they're, they don't want us to touch the time at this point in the year. So we'll move to the next. School Improvement Plan goal. So a lot of what I just talked about really falls into this MTSS goal. So just making sure that structures are in place to provide tiered instruction to students for academics, behavior, and attendance. So for behavior specifically, things that we have done this year at WHAMs, we had a summer sit retreat, and our school improvement team reworked our behavior matrix. So we just cleaned up some of the language, made it very clear so that teachers could then turn around and use that in class. Andy Berry provided some staff PD in October called "The Power of Bi." It's something he did at several of the schools. I know he did it at East, but it just empowered teachers to use specific language of how to teach students and reinforce expectations. Of course, we've continued using our PBIS reward system. Our school, our SISF team, so it's the team that meets weekly on Fridays to just discuss concerns with students. We've created some data decision rules that we've used. We're still making sure that they are reasonable rules to decide how we're going to tier students in regards to behavior and how we're going to provide support for those students. We have student discussion monthly in PLCs where teachers, it provides teachers the opportunity to discuss concerns they may have with students. And then our exploratory teachers are the ones who are completing our SEL lessons in the second steps. And then, of course, attendance. We have our school social worker that does a great job communicating with our families and communicating with our SISF team and SST to make sure that students and families have what they need to get their students to school. So next, we have our family engagement goal. So truthfully, this is very much a goal in progress for this year. So this one was tough because as our school improvement team started talking about it this year, we had no baseline data to determine. We set a goal to increase parent participation, but we had no data to know if we were going to increase. So that's really become the goal for the year. And so our school improvement team, we have a subset of the members who are really responsible for collecting that data, and so they are working to better track what is our parent participation, what are some other opportunities that we can provide to parents. So I've listed several of the ways. So open house, we've had parent breakfast. Our sixth grade had a parent lunch just recently that went over very well. Of course, book fair athletic events, parent conferences. I even took this to our parent advisory council and had a discussion with them. What would you suggest for opportunities, or what would you like as a parent for opportunities to come into the school? And so student-led conferences is something that they have, they express some interest in. So I think that's a direction that we may start to move in or present to the school improvement team for next year. Next. Okay, so, and you can click through these slides. I really just want to end my presentation by highlighting the people at WHAMs. So just like I said at the beginning, one of the things that has really stood out to me in my first year there is just the rich tradition that exists because, but it's all because of the people. And so I'm specifically going to start with our exploratory teachers. So Ms. Stox, Mr. Cochrane, chorus and band, Ms. Reed in art, you can flip because I've got them all up here. They don't know this, so if they're watching, they're probably going to say something. Mr. Brown, Mr. Mays in our PE department, and then Mr. Peyton Brown and Mr. Fairchild in our CTE department. And I really would like to highlight the exploratory teachers because I really think that they're what, they're a big part of what makes WHAMs special. I was fortunate enough to serve as the assistant principal at the high school, and so I know how great the band, the CTE, the chorus, all of those programs are at Alexander Central. But one thing that I have learned this year is it starts right here. So the collaboration that Mr. Cochrane has with Mr. Watkins and Ms. Weddington, you know, they work together unbelievably. What Ms. Reed does in her art class is just, I mean, you can see it as soon as you walk in, her artwork is plastered all over the hallway. So when you're there on June 3rd, hopefully, students haven't taken it all home at that point. But that is, I mean, I have had community members mention that specifically to me, that they love to walk in because that's the very first thing that you see there. You know, and of course, what they're doing in CTE, especially Peyton Brown in our Paxton Patterson lab, giving students opportunities to explore all of the different options that they have when they get to Alexander Central. So I really wanted to highlight that because for me, that was just an aha moment and a connection that I made, is that our program at the high school is one of the best around, but it starts here at the middle schools. Also, those teachers are always willing to step in, to help, do whatever's needed. They're some of the first to come in my office and say, "Hey, you know, don't forget that we need to do this." And so I appreciate them a whole lot. So what's special about WHAMs? Again, I just can't say it enough, but it is the people. So this does not have everybody, but this was a graphic that Ms. Lewis put together during Public Schools Week that we put out. So I put it here because it is the staff. It is So I put it here, because it is the staff, it is the students. Um, again, I, you know, West is the best, is the saying that's out there, and it, that's the truth, because of the people who were there. And so my goal, as the principal, is to keep it the best, um, or to keep West the best. And I've said that all year, um, and so the, the people are what make it special. So I hope that you get to experience that when you show up on June 3rd, um, you can flip to the next. And then, of course, we couldn't do it without community partners. So our community that's there in Bethlehem or in Alexander County is also what makes West Alexander so special. So these are our community partners, and I have used them mostly this year to provide, um, opportunities to show teachers how appreciated they are. Um, we had an Easter egg hunt, that we were able to fill the eggs with lots of different prizes because of our community partners earlier in the year. Um, it was actually the day of this big safety drill when we got back. That was just what we did to kinda have a team-building activity, and so, and then, of course, Teacher Appreciation Week last week, they all provided food, I was able to provide a geranium to all my teachers, um, from some donations. So thank you to our community partners, and thank you again for allowing me to lead West Alexander. Any questions?
Thank you for everything you do every day as a parent, like Mr. Dagenhart said about East, uh, having a daughter at West, it is a very positive environment here, come home each day. Your staff, I'll say this, the communication that comes via the team that she's on, I know you, everybody hopefully understands the way you split them up in teams, the communication is very good, and, and I appreciate that as a parent.
Thank you. I will provide, I'll give them that feedback.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Board of Education Committee reports. I would like to start with the Budget Committee, as we've been going through a number of conversations regarding this and the reduction in force that's been taking place. The process continues to evolve in the reduction of force and our budgetary challenges that we have, and it's reached a point now where it's more from a reduction in force to a reduction in personnel. It's a, it's a qualification in terms of which process and procedure we will continue, and Dr. Hefner will share the details as we evolve from a reduction in force process, which is Policy 7920, into a reduction in personnel process, which is Policy 7950. Dr. Hefner, if you could, please.
Sure. Uh, when we, uh, we being Dr. Klor and I, met with the attorney last week, we narrowed down, and due to resignations and such, we figured out that there are really two categories of employees on these lists that we've talked about, one being the ESRA list and one being the 1.5 million reduction list. Those two categories of employees are classified employees, they are at-will employees, and that means that they are not under any kind of contract. The other category involves certified staff, and in looking at their contracts, they were all non-career status, and what that means is, is that they were never granted tenure before tenure was taken away, and their contracts actually all end, they were scheduled to end on June 30th of 2024. That is the reason for the change in the use of policy, but really, everything will continue as planned. Uh, we will review the list in closed session with the board again tonight, and then they will make an official vote on the remaining list at the June board meeting.
Thank you very much. Now, that means that there would be some individuals within our organization who would be notified that would have a right to ask for a hearing, but upon discussion with council and an understanding of fairness, it is best that anyone who would receive notification be entitled to a hearing. So therefore, as we proceed forward with the process, anyone who is unfortunately receiving the notice has a right to hearing. So that's an important notification for the whole community and for all to know that we wanna be as fair and, and, and respectful of everyone inside of our team. Then, lastly, as we-
And the hearings are scheduled to be held during the month of June, after the board meeting.
Thank you. And next that we have is those hearings, um, we've selected three board members to be part of that hearing team. Uh, Mr. Dagenhart will be on that hearing team, Mr. Bowman will be on the hearing team, and Mr. Reese will be on the hearing team. If there's a conflict for whatever reason, that one particular individual will excuse themselves or recuse themselves, and we'd still have two be participants in that hearing to provide the employees an open opportunity to communicate their case. I mean, any, that's it for Budget Committee updates. We will be discussing in closed session the details on the reduction in personnel plan, um, and then we will continue forward as to the next steps, as we re-enter into open session again after. Any other, any other committee updates?
Um, I probably, the facilities has met last week, um, and I'll give, um, I'm gonna speak about the football field later, but, um, the sale of Old Wittenburg, and we've started the discussion about, uh, the old head start of the old Ellendale School Building. Uh, we're getting an appraisal started for that building, that'll be our first step and move from that. Um, the old Wittenburg building, um, there was a fuel tank found on the property, so the buyer, um, requested getting that tested to make sure there wasn't a lot of fuel spillage and something, you know, down the road that would affect him, and I understand that.
It was underground, it's an underground fuel tank.
Yes. So that has been done, the test has been done, we're waiting for those results. If that comes back good, then I don't see any issues with going forward, but that's where we are with those two. Uh, I would like to, as facilities, by June meeting, be able to discuss, start the discussion with the old head start building, so that's where we're at, right?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to share on the superintendent search. I look forward to, um, meeting with you all on Friday, May the 17th. The Mason Borough Group has reported to us that they have, they have, uh, got a six semifinalist that has been down that we will be interviewing. So I am very, um, excited, anxious, nervous, all of the above, but working with the Mason Borough Group, they, they have been fantastic. Um, they presented to us a plan of action of how to get us to July 1, but situation and circumstances out of their control, um, due to Board of Education members scheduling and those kinda things, the interviews got moved out from the April the 29th and the April 30th date to May the 17th. And, and I'm sure that you all know, in your own homes, and trying to gather and get just a small body of people together is, um, a small, a small challenge. So, um, but I look forward to that day, and, um, we will, we will go from there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for the update. Do we have any other committee updates? Very well. So now we enter the superintendent report.
Certainly, and this is attached in your agenda. I, um, it was attached in the draft agenda, and the only thing that I changed, I did make one slight revision to Bullet 4, and I'll talk about that when I get to that bullet. But I will just, uh, just take this opportunity to say Happy Belated Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. It was officially celebrated last week. I loved seeing the special activities that were scheduled at each of the schools, and in my mind, every day is Staff Appreciation Day, when you're talking about public schools and, and the staff within them. I, um, really enjoy this time of the year, because we specifically take time, even if it is just five days, to celebrate the wonderful people in this school system. It ran, again, May 6th through the 12th, and I just want to encourage everyone to thank the people that make it happen. Ms. Mayo, uh, she talked about the thing that makes West Alexander Middle School so special, it's the people within the building. A building's just a building, but when you go to looking at the people within it, that's what makes it special and exceptional. So I just thank all of our staff in the Alexander County school system. Next, you will see, uh, it is attached also, the May report, and I'm going to hit just a couple of highlights. Dr. Curry, uh, wanted to make a report, but since attachments had to be attached on the draft agenda, she wasn't able to get that done. So I have some exciting iReady data that I'll share on her behalf. But enrollment, uh, attendance, and dust ridership, something that we include each month, those are staying, just about the same. Family engagement, you might have heard me talk earlier in the week on the radio about Phones Free Friday, and that's scheduled for this Friday, May 17th, and it is in conjunction with Mental Health Awareness Month. And it was very telling when the Attorney General visited Alexander Central, and I heard students talk about being addicted to their phones. It was, um, I guess reaffirming things that I thought were happening, but they talked about it openly, and about how they would try to give themselves a limited amount of screen time, but maybe they were watching reels or videos or whatever, and the timer would go off, but they couldn't make themselves stop. They talked about fear of missing out, and I talked to Rick Gilbert about, that actually is a pathology, believe it or not, it's called FOMO. And what it is, when you see a person continually looking at a phone, it is because they fear of missing out on something, whether it's a work text or, or whatever, or maybe something going on in a group text, they don't want to miss out on anything. So I found some of my studying about the harm of, um, social media, the harm of having devices, uh, I, I am startled at the number of children from age eight and up, the percentage that actually already have smartphones, and I am just, I'm thrilled that we're at least talking about it, becoming more aware of the damages. And, uh, just for those of you who might want to contact me on Friday, I'm not going to be in the office, and I will not be looking at my phone. So Dr. Dalrevis, I could give you a screenshot from Friday, and I will show you, I will have very little or no screen time myself. But we are running a contest for the students, and students are able to take a screenshot of whatever their screen time was for the day, and, uh, those with the lowest, well, hopefully, will have one winner, but if not, if we have ties, we're gonna put their names in a bucket and draw out for a prize, a gift card. So hopefully, that will be an incentive, but just talking about it. And, um, I read a book recently that said, when you wake up in the mornings, if the first thing that you do is look at your cellphone, that you have an addiction. And I do, that's one of the first things I do to ensure I have FOMO, I'm fearing I missed out on something that maybe happened during the night, that I need to know about to get ready to come to work and address. So, um, anyway, I'm glad we're talking about it, and I think Friday will be, um, it'll be good for all of us. The children also talked about when they don't have their phones and they don't have the social media, that they found that they are much happier, because they are not seeing drama going on, on those devices, and they are not comparing themselves to Sally or Johnny down the street, that try to make us believe that they have a perfect life, because that's what everybody tries to do on social media, and I have yet to meet the person with the perfect life. So I'm still looking for that person. Anyway, also, uh, that family engagement group, I look forward to having a little get-together with them on Thursday, and I have that on my calendar, Dr. Dalrevis and, and Ms. Robinett, I'm looking forward to actually seeing that parent advisory group. Testing, I would like to speak about that briefly. We are, uh, when this test was given, we had completed 86% of the school year. So, uh, if you will look at the top part of the, the results, all of those are reading results from iReady, and then down below, you will see math results for iReady. The good news, and I'm gonna say this, and I won't do it nearly as eloquently as Dr. Curry, but when you look at the reading scores, you can count the schools, nine schools are involved in iReady reading, eight of the nine either are meeting or exceeding growth at this point, and that is very, very exciting. And then if you look at math, and I think Mr. Huffman spoke to the improvements in math, that at East, nine of our nine schools, on this iReady assessment, they were exceeding or meeting growth. And so that's a great thing, yes. And that's a result of intentional instruction. Okado, uh, staff vacancies, we are making a recommendation for a naval, uh, JROTC instructor, which is a good thing, we've been looking to fill that position a long time, but we still need a custodian at the central office. You can see, uh, the SLAP assessments, those are threats as far as to oneself, the threat assessment below, you see, we had three of those last month, those were threats toward others, and then you see discipline for March and April, and then you finish out the report with exceptional children, 504s and health plans. Any questions about the May report attachment? If not, the third thing I want to make you aware of, there've been a couple of changes to the budget, excuse me, the budget process calendar for the fiscal year 2025. The public hearing on the budget is going to be held at the, uh, May 20th meeting. The Board of Commissioners plan to adopt the fiscal year 2025 budget at the June 3rd meeting, and both of these items are one week earlier than was originally planned. I just wanted you all to have the most current information about the county's budget process. And then lastly, you see those list of dates, you've had those dates before in bold. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Mayo, you hit it not once, but twice, that we have a board visit scheduled to West on June 3rd. Please note the start time is at 12:00. And then on June 4th, we're going to East, please note the start time at 12:00, and everything else you have had prior to tonight's meeting. Any questions?
Um, will we be able to visit Taylor's Elementary as a board? I don't think we've done that yet.
Uh, I am likely not going to be able to schedule that, just due to my schedule, and we're very close to the end of the year.
Okay.
So maybe that's something you all can pick back up, uh, in August.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hefner. We go on to next unfinished business, Proposed Board of Education Policy Revision, Second Reading, Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. We have five policies up for second reading tonight. Uh, Policy 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, Policy 7130, Licensor, Policy 7510, Leave, Policy 7520, Family and Medical Leave, and Policy 7730, Employee Conflict of Interest. Uh, these have stood for a month, I've had no, uh, suggestions or requests for changes, so I, um, ask that we approve on second reading.
Do we have a motion from the board to approve Policy Number 7100, 7130, 7510, 7520, and 7730?
Same.
Second.
So we have first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All policies are approved unanimously.
Thank you.
So next, under New Business, we have the Proposed Board of Education Policy Revision, First Reading, Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, our CFO.
Okay, we have two policies that are up for first reading this month, Parent Involvement and Prohibition Against Retaliation, and, um, I'll get a request, um, from, uh, input from the principals and bring those back next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is Proposed Board of Education Policy, First Reading. Ms. Ryan, you have, um, the microphone.
Thank you. Um, so sometime back, the board had discussed change in Policy Number 6420, and it was discussed amongst the policy committee, that at the time we changed that, it would, the good time to change that would be between superintendents. So with Dr. Hefner leaving, uh, the policy committee has looked at that, and, um, I sent that information to you guys, so you would have it ahead of time, and we would look to change the amount, uh, to $30,000, uh, under contracts with the board. So if you need a second reading, we can do that, or if there's, you know-
It was $50,000, right?
I'm sorry, $50,000. That, it was changed in 2018, and it was originally $30,000. That's where, I'm sorry, that's where I got that, but we're changing it to $50,000. That's where, I'm sorry, that's where I got that, but we're changing it to $50,000, if that's the pleasure of the board.
So do we have a motion from the board to move forward and approve this change in policy for a change, update in assigning authority to $50,000?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The policy's unanimously approved. Effectivity date will be July 1st?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Kathy Clodell, we have proposed school nutrition vendor recommendations and program update.
Thank you, Chairman Aguias, Dr. Hefner, and board members for letting me bring this information to you tonight. We, I sent the information about the bids to you. We have been able to roll over our bids for everything except the pizza, and it's out of time, so I've got an opening of the bid on May 22nd, and I sent it out to about seven different companies, and I don't know if we'll get, we only had Smart Mouth last time, but we will see. But every, all of our bidders are going to roll over. Our ice cream bid was new this year, and that has been, he's agreed to do that bid rollover with the same prices we have now. And if you have been out and seen the ice cream, the kids are loving it.
Love it.
Our new vendor has a lot more flavors available. And I know y'all like it too, so I would ask that you approve the bid rollovers, and I will present the pizza bid at the next meeting. So I'm waiting for approval of those.
Do we have any questions from any board members? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Do we have first and second to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion's unanimously approved.
Thank you so much. The next item was the meal price recommendation. I'm proposing that we have attached a copy of our last couple of years' budgets, and I've also done a chart showing, I did a chart showing the number of meals that we're serving this year. And you remember, in 2223, we were still serving under the waivers, and everybody was free. And then last year, we had to do meal prices. But this year, we are back to either at or way above. Our breakfast hasn't gotten quite as, as high as it was before last, but our lunches have exceeded, and so we have, we have done, we're basically to date, have received about almost $2 million in reimbursement for our meals. That's money that the county, the children and parents are benefiting from, that they're not having to pay out of pocket. So we are running about $100,000 below what we did last year on our fund balance. It was about $200,000, but we just got a, we're getting another $110,000 for our supply shortage issues, supply chain issues, and that'll bring it back up. So we're, we're within about $100,000, and we have plenty of money in our child nutrition fund balance to cover that. So we're, we are proposing we do CEP one more year and see how it goes. Some of the things that we've added, like the ice cream came later in the school year, and I'm hoping that we will be able to not lose any next year. So even with, and those of you who don't understand CEP, that's the number of free and reduced, free meals because of parents having Medicaid and SNAP or of those, those benefits automatically comes. And our CEP number is based on that number, not the free meal applications. So we are not taking meal applications. We're not allowed to when we're a CEP school. So the calculation is you take those direct certification kids, the percentage, and we had about 60% in the elementary schools, and you multiply it by a multiplying factor of 1.6, which means we're getting about 96% of those elementary funds at the free rate. So it's sort of the break-even point. Our middle schools and high schools, we're hoping will bring those numbers up. So that's what it's based on. But we, we propose to do that again next year. If there are any questions or objections, that's how we're going to proceed for this coming school year. I know the parents will be happy. We've had a lot of positive comments.
Was a significant contribution to the community that you were able to deliver by having the free lunch program that you put in place. How, how much of a dollar value-